Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the special meeting of the Board of Education for October 7, 2020. Call the meeting to order if you would please join us in pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Nikki, would you please call roll?
Ms. Davis. Ms. Hill. Mrs. Hopper. Mr. Schindler.
Yes.
Dr. Cortino.
Here.
Mr. Seltzer.
He's frozen, but I see him.
Mr. Todd.
I am here. We have no closed session tonight. Sorry, Kevin.
Sorry, my wireless is being.
Exactly. Okay, so before, let's see, next up will be public comments. Before I start the public comment section, I would like to provide a brief update on our board meeting space. As you know, we're virtual tonight, but soon we'll be back in person. And as you may be aware, we'll be transitioning to in-person board meetings at the new Welcome Center on South Middle Schools Campus. The furniture has been moved, everything's almost in order, but final touches are being finished on signage and technology, and it should be ready for when we resume in-person meetings at our next scheduled board meeting on October 21. Many contractors and Parkway staff have done an outstanding job preparing the state, the space for us. So thanks to all of them. So on to public statements. Tonight, we have a number of people wishing to speak, and I have one statement that I will read. Everyone will get an opportunity to speak in the order that they signed up. "We provide this opportunity to each meeting for citizen comment in an effort to maintain an open and respectful dialogue with our community. The public comment session is not the appropriate forum for addressing individually identifiable student and/or personnel matters. Therefore, due to privacy laws protecting students and employees, comments about these matters should not include personally identifiable information about particular students or employees. Members of the public staff and students are encouraged to utilize established policies and procedures for offering suggestions or addressing concerns and complaints prior to bringing the issue before the board. Please be mindful that the meetings of the board, including your statements, are broadcast and that you are responsible for any public comments you make. In lieu of a public statement, you may choose to submit your comments to the board in writing. Also, due to time constraints and the need to complete the primary responsibilities of our meeting agenda, we cannot respond during the meeting, so you will receive a response from us in writing. We're always available to have open dialogue outside of our meetings and can be reached by email or phone using the contact information on the Parkway website." Tonight, we have 25 speakers and one written statement, as I mentioned. Each speaker will have two minutes to make their statement. Once your time expires, we will automatically move to the next scheduled speaker. When we're in person, we're able to provide a timer on the screen, but for these virtual meetings, you'll need to keep track of your own time. When your time is concluded, your microphone will automatically be muted. And at that time, please exit the meeting and rejoin the live stream available to the public." So first up, we have Kim Mitiksov.
Kim, you should be able to unmute.
Great, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you see me?
There you are.
Oh.
Far away.
I am far away, my children must have done that. So, Dr. Marty, President Todd, members of the board, and Ms. Dover, I understand this meeting has been called to reconsider distance learning for high school students for the second quarter. I'm here to ask that you remain steadfast in last week's decision despite pressure from political figures and parent groups. I am a community member and a scientist. I have examined the data from the county and the Parkway Health Dashboard. There has not been a significant change in the data for high school age students in the last week, which would warrant sending students back to school. Currently, this age group represents over 85% of all positive cases in youth under the age of 20 in our area. Combine that with the high school population sizes, which can be three to four times that of an elementary school, and the impossibility of social distancing, and you have a recipe to spread this virus. I was disheartened at last week's meeting that the safety of teachers and staff were not part of the public discussion. These adults have committed their lives to serving families in this community, and they deserve the consideration. Sending them back into a building which exceeds the current occupancy limit set by the county for restaurants and bars is unacceptable. None of us know for certain what the board's decision will be tonight. What I do know is anything other than a continuation of distance learning, especially after the unanimous decision a week ago to keep students home, would be contrary to the district's commitment to data-driven decision-making. If you do choose to send high school students back, I expect that the board will make clear the science-based evidence used to inform that decision, ensuring the safety of all stakeholders. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Laura Echo Camp.
Laura, you should be able to unmute.
Yes, hello.
Hi.
Okay, Dr. Marty, President Todd, members of the board, and Ms. Dover, my name is Laura Echo Camp, and I'm a chemistry teacher at South High. I ask that you maintain the high school learning model that you approved last week, a distance learning plan which provides continuity and predictability for students, staff, and families. When our high school students return to in-person learning, they deserve to come back with a plan in place that is well thought out, safe, and that allows teachers to deliver exceptional curriculum. Making an abrupt reactionary change based on an announcement from the county is a disservice to the Parkway community. Asking a high school teacher to provide quality instruction for a course that he or she has never taught, and with only days to prepare is certainly not exceptional. I reached out yesterday to my own high school calculus teacher who works at a large public high school in St. Peters. Yesterday, another of his students tested positive, and as a result, seven additional students who sit within six feet are forced to quarantine and will miss two weeks of school. With our quarter schedule, this is a full unit of curriculum. This instability will be detrimental to our high school students' progress. The pure size of our high schools makes the logistics much more complicated than middle school and elementary schools. There are 1,666 students and 147 adults at South High. Even with 25% of those people out of the building for continued virtual learning, we will have 1,300 bodies breathing the same air, using the same bathrooms, and rubbing shoulders in overcrowded hallways. Just last week, you agreed that it was necessary to spread out over 1,000 West Middle students to West High because of overcrowding. If you send high school students back, how will you spread everyone out? It's just not possible, and not a risk we should be willing to take. I want nothing more than to go back to normal, but we are in the middle of a pandemic, and normal is not realistic. Please stay the course with high school distance learning. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, we have Joanna Filer. Jason, do you see there she is? Hi.
Hi, I'm sorry, it kicked me out.
That's all right, you're here now.
Yeah. All right, thank you for letting me speak. Given Dr. Page's encouraging statements of returning high school students back to the classroom, I want to let the Parkway Superintendent and the school board know that I, along with my husband, fully support this and are inspired to have our junior at West back in the classroom. Distance learning has had so many challenges and struggles. My daughter has had a significant drop in grades that is now putting her plans for college in jeopardy. She's experienced a sense of loneliness due to the isolation that only comes with attending school virtually. Students need to have face-to-face interactions with their peers and teachers. Keeping high schoolers home is harmful to their education, social skills, and mental health. High schoolers want to be all together with their classmates. Singling out certain students such as SSD students or other students with special needs would only place labels on these students. Teachers can livestream their classes. All students can be in the same class with the same teacher without significant interruptions to their schedules. Students that have decided to continue with distance learning would log into the livestream, be able to participate as if they're physically there. This option would be the best way if a student needs to quarantine or isolate due to COVID-19. They would be able to log in and not miss any interruptions and have the same teacher and the same advantages as being in the class. Additionally, this would be wonderful for students that first decided to participate virtually and then changed their mind, they can join the classroom in person. All kids together in person and virtually. I plead for you to act in your good conscience, good faith, and do what is right and get Parkway High School students back in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Whitney Wilhelm.
Hello, Whitney.
Hello, good evening. My name is Whitney Wilhelm, and I am both an alum of and an English teacher at South High. And I would like to speak to the possible return of high school students and teachers. I was, like many others, not just hired for my credentials, but because of my ability to develop relationships with staff and students for the betterment of student learning. A typical day in my classroom involves students collaborating, writing on the same paper, learning to talk face-to-face or in front of a large group. I move frequently from desk to desk, peering over shoulders for one-on-one conferences. We do restorative circles and sometimes spread out across the school for video projects, research, and book clubs. My classroom is not the only one like this, and clearly, things have changed now. However, although many of these things look different, and they aren't as good as the real thing, they can be replicated to a great extent online. I, for example, am speaking to you face-to-face because it's too unsafe for us to be in person. We could share a document right now and all write in it. We could participate in book clubs like my students did this morning. I could pull you into a breakout room and have a one-on-one because I'm worried about you. And relationships can be developed. I know which of my students are moving, one who wants to be a welder and who had a huge quinceañera and is so proud of her dad. This is the result of the work that you praised just last week. The fact that everyone wants to be back in school is really a tribute to what happens in our classrooms. It is a tribute to the teachers and staff that make the school environment so special. But the research-backed best practices you want out of learning, they cannot happen in our rooms without risking the safety of our students and staff. We are the ones educated in how to make this environment. We are telling you that it isn't going to work the way you think. By sending us back now, you are just putting us all at risk, and we will not be getting what you want. Please do not make us complicit in potentially harming the people to protect or sacrificing the learning that could occur. Do not make the decision to trade this lifeline of online learning for a mirage of a refuge. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Teri Zuber.
Good evening, board members. You have heard me speak at multiple times, heard my daughter, a junior at Central, and received numerous emails expressing the many concerns about the inadequate education of virtual learning, and more importantly, the deteriorating mental health of our high school students. I speak tonight with hope, hope that you have heard the overwhelming and desperate voices of our students and their parents. As our Board of Education, you serve as our representatives, and tonight, we ask for a call to action. Tonight, you should be provided with a well-planned viable option for a second-quarter in-person learning opportunity that ensures the equitable instruction time between first and second-quarter students. As such a plan is not presented, the Board of Education, taxpayers, parents, and most importantly, the students of Parkway deserve a detailed explanation as to why. While it should be unthinkable to not have a return to learn plan for high school students, if Parkway forces an all-virtual second quarter, their current plan to arbitrarily extend every class by 20 minutes cannot stand. This general extension of all courses creates an inequality of education between first and second-quarter students and does not provide the individualized learning support as stated during the last board meeting. The dedicated academic lab has been on the schedule since the start of the year and should be continued in full to allow students to get the individualized support they need. This could be in a particular subject area. If a student struggles in science, an extra 20 minutes in history doesn't support their need. This could be time to connect with guidance counselors, administrators, SSD aides. Time students can meet with career counselors to map out next steps for their post-high school plans. An opportunity to offer a fourth course to students who are credit deficient, in particular if they fail the first-quarter class to repeat it second quarter while the material is still fresh. This also supports our teachers by allowing them more time to dedicate to individualized learning needs and allows collaboration opportunities similar to an in-person ACT Lab, where as an example, a daily physics Zoom session can be rotated, shared responsibility by a group of teachers, allowing the other teachers to offer one-to-one sessions versus the current academic lab time, where, as my daughter would say, is a Hunger Games session. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have Sebastian Sutton.
Hello. My name is Sebastian Sutton, and I'm a senior at Parkway South High School. Thank you Nicole Harms for allowing me to speak during this lot. As I already stated, I attend Parkway South High School. I felt the need to speak on not only myself, but my brothers and friends within the Parkway School District. Online learning has been a struggle for me and many others that I know. Someone with depression and ADHD, I struggle with focusing and motivating myself. Because of the added pressure and the inability to physically meet with my teachers, I've been in a constant state of anxiety. This is damaging to my mental and physical health. For instance, my two brothers, who are both A and B students, are now failing, and they also have a lack of motivation to continue school as a freshman and sophomore in high school. Online learning feels repetitive, and I do not feel like I'm retaining any information I quote-unquote learned. I think that going back to school in-person learning is what best for Parkway because of those who need extra help are being left behind. As someone who's about to go to college, I feel this type of learning is not helping me prepare for the next step. If in-person learning can be done safely, which I believe it can, it would be the best thing for high schoolers to start the second quarter in person. I would like you guys to share the analysis of numbers of students failing compared to this time last year. I, along with many others, believe that we need in-person learning. Thank you for your time, and have a good day.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mira Gayed.
Let's give her just one more second, President Todd. Mrs. Gayed, you should be able to unmute.
I'm sorry, I got, I got kicked out for a second.
Welcome.
I'm reading this statement on behalf of a parent who wants to remain anonymous because she's afraid of retaliation. "Dr. Marty and board members, both my husband and I are Parkway graduates. When we were deciding on our first home, we chose to move across the river to San Charles in Francis Hall School Districts. We were young, we were starting a business, and we knew that home was not going to be our final stop. Our goal was always to have our children go up and graduate from Parkway. The goal took a little longer than we initially thought, but finally, after 12 years, and right before my oldest started high school, we moved to Parkway in the West District. Their children that grew up in Francis Hall with eight and nine years, it was hard to convince them that our move was for their best interest. He wanted to stay with their friends, and we, our parents, wanted them to experience what we did at Parkway. Now imagine what my students, my kids are feeling. All their lifelong friends, where they see everything, social media platforms, their friends are going to games, they're going to clubs, dances, and social activities. Their lives are back to normal. Do things look a little different this year than the past? Yes, absolutely, but the kids in Francis Hall are crying. The parents out there are happy, and we at Parkway District look like fools, complete and other fools. Francis Hall took the initiative, and platforms that kids need to be in the classrooms, and they've made it a point to make it safe as possible for them to continue to get in-person education. Dr. Marty, your job as a superintendent is to put your students first, make decisions based around them. The data has always shown since April, May, that our children are more likely to be hit by a bus that suffers severe effects from COVID-19. The majority of our teaching staff are also not high-risk. Do we have some teachers that are truly suffering COVID? Absolutely, I'll not negate that. Those are the teachers that need neither to take a year or teach virtually. The teachers are going to be a common cold through symptoms. Finally, you can hire new ones. Parkway's tradition should be ashamed of itself for allowing politics to dictate our common sense. Thank you."
Thank you. Next up, we have Ashley West.
Hello. Hi, my name is Ashley West, I'm a junior at West High. I created an online petition for students' voices to be heard. In just a week, my petition has 361 signatures. I wanted to share a few comments directly from Parkway students that were on my petition. "I need school now, I'm not doing well. Back to school now. Get us back in school. Online school is hard. Get us back. We need to be in a classroom. It is hard to learn online, and it is harder to talk to your teacher if you have an important question. I am a sophomore at Parkway West. We need to go back to school. I want to go back to person school. Haven't seen my friends and teachers in over six months. Making me stay home and stare at a computer screen all day is not school. Let us learn. I need to be in school to learn. I have to go to in-person school ASAP. I am suffering, my self-esteem is going down in my grades as a consequence of my GPA is going down. I had to drop an honors class, and I'm failing other honors classes. I have to go to an in-person school. Listen to us all. Thank you for your time."
Thank you. Next up, we have Paul Lancia.
Hello.
Good evening.
Hi, Dr. Marty, members of board. I appreciate the time to speak today. Honestly, I wish we could get more people like Ashley and Sebastian to talk. That's why I'm joining today to speak for the children. I'm a parent of a sophomore, a senior, and a seventh grader in the West District, and I'm here to talk about getting the kids back to school as soon as possible. Our kids are isolated, they're suffering socially and academically. So I continue to hear about some of the teachers talking about the physical effects of COVID, but we need to think about the students. That's what Parkway School District is for. We've seen some positive steps allowing athletes and some activities to meet following specific guidelines. Most teachers are working very hard to make the best of a very bad situation. Even on a good day, there are school-age issues, dropped Zoom calls, internet pauses, and power outages. Some days, we as working parents can monitor if our kids are out of bed, have a camera on, can push them to join academic support sessions, ask for a teacher, something I'm sure they would do in person and wouldn't feel like a punishment. But in virtual learning, trying to schedule time with your teacher feels like a punishment. Our kids are prepping for college and reading about labs and things they should be done in the classroom. Their teachers are most effective in person because of the relationships they establish. In-person teaching and learning can be done strategically and safely. Friends in private schools have found ways to have high school in person. Second-quarter high school students only have three classes. Schedules can be made to get them in and out of the building before lunch, avoiding congregations of students. At high schools and colleges in our area and around the country, teachers interact with students in the classroom while peers watch from their rooms. Professors share screens in classroom and on Zoom to allow social distancing. As Parkway parents, we have high expectations for you to put our students' needs first.
Thank you. Next up, we have Debbie, I'm sorry, Debbie Crivelo. I hope I pronounced that correctly.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, sorry about that. Good evening, my name is Debbie Crivelo, and I have been a Parkway parent since 2008. I currently have a senior at Parkway Central High School. For the last 13 years, I've placed enormous trust in Parkway, and I have felt your dedication to our children. Tonight, I'm choosing to speak because the Board of Education and Dr. Marty have told us consistently two things need to happen for our high school students to return to school. First, the St. Louis County Executive needs to make the recommendation for them to return. That's now happened. Second, the data needs to read a certain point for the Board of Education and Dr. Marty to feel safe about opening. That has now happened as well. Since both of these things have now occurred, I'm expecting that trusting relationship to be honored. Other school districts have successfully had their high schools return to school. It is time that we follow their protocols to keep everyone safe. I want to say with 100% certainty that I respect every family's right to make the decision as best for their student. For those of you that do not wish for your child to return to school, I respect you. Now, what I'm asking for is that for those of us that need our child or children to return back to high school due to a lack of connections with their teachers virtually, struggling to understand virtual instruction in addition to their mental health needs, please let our children back to school. Our Parkway educators became teachers because they wanted to make the difference in a life of a child. To this point, I've been humbled by the amazing teachers that have taught and truly supported my children. Due to the high-quality teachers we have, my high school senior is inspired to further her education to become a teacher herself. Until now, she cannot learn this way. She is not engaged nor excited about learning as she was just seven months ago. Now she no longer even wants to be a teacher. This is not my child. She needs to go back to school now that the county and data support a return to high school. Please.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Heather Bell.
Mrs. Bell, you should be able to unmute.
There we go, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. My name is Heather Bell. Kids need to be in school, and this includes high school. I will not focus on my seniors' challenges with virtual. I'm speaking to you tonight about how to open the high schools for in-person class while keeping a virtual option available for those families who need it. Francis Hall and Fort Zumwalt are two districts in our area. They're similar size or larger with identical issues on keeping a virtual option while having five days of in-person classes while doing their best to keep their students and staff safe. They've been in school five days a week since the end of August. They have had no proven community transmission through their schools, and the COVID infection numbers posted on their website as of today, Francis Hall has over 16,000 students, they have 27 positives. They have 2,580 staff members, eight positives. Fort Zumwalt has over 18,000 students, 18 positives, and 2,032 staff members, eight positives. and 2,032 staff members, eight positives. And these numbers include the students and staff who are remaining virtual. Yes, they are quarantining a large number of kids who had contact with these few positive cases as an abundance of caution. But as I stated, even with the quarantine rules they have, they have no proof of transmission from these cases as stated on Francis Hall's website. The new Missouri COVID website shows 26 positives in the 55 to 19-year-old inside the Parkway District boundaries out of over 17,000 kids. This is almost identical to Francis Hall and Fort Zumwalt. They're going to school five days a week. We're virtual, there is no difference in infection rate between our kids. I urge you to call their superintendents and call their high school principals. Parkway can no longer deprive our kids an in-person class experience. We need a real choice for schooling and we need to learn how to function. Let them tell you how they are protecting their staff and students and then implement it. Implement it immediately for quarter.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up, we have Julia Simpson.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Hi, my name is Julia Simpson. My husband and I are both Parkway graduates. Dr. Sorrentino, you are my middle school principal. It's good to see you. We have four daughters, grades 10, 9, 3, and kindergarten. I am a registered nurse. It is time we put kids first and we return all grade levels to school. This virus is most deadly to our elderly population, especially those who live in nursing homes. In March, nursing homes across the country were shut down and put up lockdown. Elderly patients were put in isolation. According to the AARP, a nationwide mental health crisis began as these patients experienced feelings of loneliness, abandonment, depression, and fear. For many, depression set in, patients declined, many died. Our kids too are in a mental health crisis. They too are having feelings of depression, isolation, loneliness, and abandonment. We are forcing them to sit in front of a computer screen hours on end, forcing them to make grades by cramming an entire semester of work into nine weeks. Both of my high school daughters are struggling and both are usually very strong students. They have had Zoom meetings canceled, no explanation. No explanation, no substitutes. Precious class time wasted. We have been living with this virus for months. We have learned how to stay safe. The safety measures put place by the CDC are proven to be effective. I encourage this board to educate our teachers that they are safe and that our return to school, you will provide them with PPE and make their health a top priority. Two weeks ago, St. Louis County reopened all nursing homes. They ended the isolation, yet we continue to isolate our high schoolers and deprive them of an education that our taxpayers pay for and that they deserve. The most significant at-risk population is no longer in isolation, yet we are considering continuing isolating our precious kids. Nine more weeks of depression, nine more weeks of slipping grades, hours and hours and hours of.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is Melinda Untight.
Hello, Dr. Marty and Mr. Todd and the board. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I'm a high school science teacher at Parkway West. And I'm, my heart breaks hearing how students are struggling. None of us went into teaching because we didn't care about students. We are willing to do almost everything there is to reach a student, to make a student's life better, and students are always our first priority. However, the fact that the district is not including the almost 3,000 adults in the decision-making process, when they look at numbers and they look at the community spread, and the district isn't looking at the fact that staff members like myself live in COVID hot zones. My own daughter had to be tested twice within the last two months because of direct exposure to an infected COVID individual. Bringing me into the classroom is not making your student safe. In addition, many of the classrooms across the district do not have the space needed to meet minimum recommendations for social distancing. My own classroom at West High, if I were to have a full roster of 24 students, those students would be sitting shoulder to shoulder at lab tables. The only space they would have between them and another individual is three feet in front of them. Even if that class size was cut in half, the most I would be able to give them is between one and a half to two feet depending on the size of the student. And we've all seen some of our high school football players, they're pretty big boys. Um, in addition, based on the information that's previously been released, we know that the, there are more teachers that have requested to remain virtual than there are.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Laura Ricks.
Hello, and thank you for allowing me to speak. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I am the mother of two Parkway proud students. Ryan, a third grader at Highcroft Elementary, and David, a senior at Parkway Central. Anyone who knows David would say he is a very kind, hard-working, dedicated person. But like many of his peers, it took him a while to find his place. During his time at PCH with the support of music and theater departments, he did indeed find his place and that was on stage. He excelled, but sadly, that seems to have been gone. Ever since virtual school started, it has been nothing short of heartbreaking watching he and his peers be deprived of the excitement of a long-awaited senior events. Sadly, time right now is our enemy. Every day they remain virtual, there's one less chance to create a memory, to put up the finishing touches on them as humans. To add salt to the wound, he sees peers from other schools going to dances, having senior nights, et cetera, all while being in person, all parties remaining safe and healthy. He is asked often why Parkway hasn't followed suit. Unfortunately, this is just the tip of the iceberg. Virtual learning has negatively impacted his and his peers' mental health status. In fact, nearly three in 10 parents said their child is experiencing emotional or mental harm because of social distancing and in school closures, according to a nationwide Gallup poll in, back in June. Without the professional background to adequately speak to the clinical effects of mental health and COVID, I can only speak as a parent. Things we've noticed are decreased motivation, sadness, headaches, and difficulty sleeping, to name a few. I can't help but wonder, the longer the virtual goes on, are we trading one problem for another? Please, as a board, you cannot fail to be innovative and safe to get our children not only back in the classroom, but also back into the theater, the band room, clubs, as this is where our children become the adults of tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Amanda Feldman.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Amanda Feldman and I am a mother of two in the Parkway School District. Tonight, I will be reading an email from a Parkway student. Hello, Dr. Marty and fellow board members. I am a freshman at Parkway Central High School and would like to remain anonymous. The reason I'm unable to speak for myself is because of my anxiety, a chronic mental illness. You must understand that students need other students. We are part of the generation with the most severe mental health rate of all time. Human interaction is crucial for most of us. Humans are social creatures. We need human interaction to survive. I know many students, including myself, who are struggling, struggling with severe mental health. 90% of students with mental health conditions have continued to get worse during quarantine. Teen suicide rates have increased almost 300%. America has one of the highest teen suicide rates. We are not okay. Students fall further down the path of severe depression, causing many students and kids my age to self-harm, a dangerous form of coping with depression. 7.4% of children aged 3 to 17, approximately 4.5 million, have a diagnosed behavior problem. 7.1% of children aged 3 to 17, approximately 4.4 million, have diagnosed anxiety. 3.2% of children aged 3 to 17, approximately 1.9 million, have diagnosed depression. These numbers have continued to increase since school closed in March. As you can tell, these rates are higher than the risk of getting COVID or even dying from it. We do understand that there are children who have an immune disorder and we are not asking for them to be forced to go back to school. We are asking for the kids who need to be back to be allowed to. You have been speaking on the account of the student saying, oh, they don't get to go back. They don't want to go back because we don't have emails from students. But we haven't emailed you due to your refusal to listen. Those who have email got back a suck-it-up reply. So why would we email if the administrators don't listen? By law, the second you are at school, you become legally required to do what is best for us. You hold parental responsibility, but you choose to be selfish and force us to stay home even though we need to go back for the well-being of our health. Let me set a scene for you about what this quarantine is like.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have Jacqueline Coots.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Jacqueline Coots. I am a mom of four kids, three in Parkway since 2014. Tonight, I will be reading a very important statement from a parent of a high schooler in Parkway. This person wishes to remain anonymous, so I will be reading it for her. Again, this is not regarding my own child. The statement reads as follows. I wish to address the toll this is taking on children with emotional issues. My son is a high school junior on an IEP. Our family recently reached its breaking point with virtual learning. During virtual learning, he has attended class daily as well as daily special help sessions and still felt himself feeling more and more each day. The proper supports for his IEP were not set up and the grades he currently has do not reflect those of the time he was in person. He frequently expressed feeling defeated and discouraged and alone. He finally shut down completely and spent three days inpatient at Mercy Hospital. When he felt so worthless, he couldn't process. He felt so overwhelmed that he considered ending his life would be the best alternative. His treating doctor said he spends a major part of his day with teenagers who cannot handle the social isolation of virtual schooling. They are not getting the proper support in school they need to succeed. Everyone seemed extremely concerned immediately about athletes and found ways to help them get what they needed. This was actually, actually a national discussion. We must not fill the quiet children who suffer in silence until they give up. We are supposed to be one of the best school districts but are leaving behind the kids who are not on the field or in the gym. Please don't fill this much larger group of kids who need in-school socialization and learning. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Sarah Boyce.
President Todd, I'm not seeing Sarah in attendance.
All right, we will try and revisit her. Next up, I have someone who is registered to speak and was unable to make it. So, excuse me, they have provided a written statement which I will read. And this is from Monica Dickens. Good evening, I am, I'm sorry, good evening. I am concerned with the logistics of returning to school based upon the lack of subs and limited resources of adult supervision. If a teacher tests positive or is exposed to a student who tests positive for COVID, they will need to quarantine for two weeks. How will the district be able to provide supervision to students, especially with limited subs? How logistically does this work? Will teachers be asked to supervise other teachers' students? With the daily health screenings, teachers and students will not be attending regularly because they may not be able to come to school with headache or other listed symptoms, trying to limit any symptoms of COVID, et cetera. Many people can be asymptomatic rendering the daily health screening lacking in accuracy. Will sick days of having to quarantine be unlimited due to exposure to so many students? Thank you. Thank you for your statement, Monica. Next up, we have Lauren Herzog.
This is Jean Marie Herzog.
Jean Marie, okay.
Hi, I'm Lauren.
Hi, Lauren.
I'm a sophomore at West High and I think we should go back as safely as possible. There are a lot of kids who are athletes and I'm an athlete myself. I play volleyball and I have at least two hours of physical activity and no screen time a day. But I know there are a lot of kids who don't play sports or don't get a chance to go outside as much or get away from the screen, increasing their screen time and decreasing their mental health. I know for myself, both my parents work and it's very difficult for all of us to balance home life and school life with their work and my school. There's been an increase in homework, myself and other students feel. And while this isn't as big of an issue, it is for some students, especially those who have struggled with learning or learning even at school, it's become even more difficult at home. Supplies are also limited to some students who can't afford to buy them or just don't have access to them. There's also more outlets for help at school than there are at home. I think I can speak for myself and other students when I say we are more than happy to comply with any masks or social distancing rules that are recommended and we would like to come back as safe as possible. I've seen a large increase in overwhelming amount of work, isolation, and a drop in mental health. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Patrick Portland.
Come on, huh? Good evening, President Todd, Vice President Hopper, board members, Dr. Marty and Mrs. Stover. My name is Patrick Portland, I'm president of Parkway N E A, the union representing the certified educators in the district. You've already heard from educators and parents regarding the decision you will make later this evening and the one you made last week. Some have spoken in favor and others in opposition. Some have called for a return to face-to-face learning for social and emotional reasons as well as educational ones. Others have again questioned whether the data that these decisions are being made on clearly justifies them. At the end of the day, the choice is yours to make, that is undeniable. What I wish for you to understand is that your choice to return to face-to-face learning is creating issues of safety and equity for students and staff that have not been adequately addressed as this meeting occurs. I want to name three significant issues that are of great concern and need to be addressed. There's the challenge to district leadership to ensure that safety is foremost in the planning for and implementation of new learning schedules. Students and staff need to feel that they are safe. There's the challenge to district leadership to ensure that educators have adequate time and support to make all the changes needed to teach in whatever teaching and learning mode or modes they may be working with. Staff needs time to make changes to support learning. And there's the challenge to district leadership to ensure that the structures put into place for each level and type of teaching and learning reflect the needs and difficulties inherent in them. This is what issue, this is an issue of equity that needs to be taken into account. Students and staff need to be confident that what they are doing makes sense. Parkway educators will continue the amazing work they have done with and for students, no matter what the teaching and learning mode they are using. But they need these issues addressed so that they can do that work. Without well-thought-out answers to these questions, answers that take into account the reality of teaching and learning, answers shared with educators, I fear the changes that you are contemplating will have more negative consequences than positive. Thank you.
Thank you.
President Todd will be returning in just a moment.
You did it again, didn't you, Jason?
That was my fault again, yes, I apologize.
It's okay. I knew when it happened. Next up, we have Nicholas Harms.
Hello, School Board and Dr. Marty. My name is Nicholas Harms and I'm a senior at West High. I'm a high-achieving student and I've been a three-year member of two varsity sports, basketball and baseball. I've talked to tons of my classmates and all of my teachers and I've heard one resounding theme from every single one of them. No matter how hard we try, we cannot learn the same way virtually as we can in a classroom. Education is the foundation of our society. It is what pushes us forward to new heights and develops our minds to solve the problems of tomorrow. We are currently being deprived of this essential learning because of a virus with a death rate. because of a virus with a death rate of less than a tenth of a percent and not a single death in our age category in the state of Missouri. I understand some may choose not to come back. However, everyone should at least be given the choice to return. Us high school students are competing for hundreds of thousands of dollars of scholarships as well as admissions to colleges, counting on AP tests, grade point averages, and standardized test scores. We absolutely must be in person to accomplish these tasks to the best of our ability. I personally am working as hard as possible to play a collegiate sport at a highly selective college. An online school is making my life far more difficult than it has ever been. Not only that, but I'm a very social person, and it's extremely hard for me to do school cooped up in a room with no one else all day. I beg you to vote to return my fellow high schoolers and I to school immediately.
Thank you. Next up, we have Evan Graves.
Hey, thank you to the board members again for their service at Parkway, and thanks to the teachers who have been doing an incredible job, obviously, facing hard, these difficult situations. I want to talk to you guys about a couple of things. For example, one thing being grades. I feel like our grades don't really matter at all. I have all A's right now, and I don't feel any pride about them. I feel like the grades aren't that hard to achieve, and I don't feel anything about them. I'm not, I don't get that thing, or I work really hard, and I'm like so proud I got these grades. I don't really care, honestly. It doesn't mean it's nothing to me. Next is education in the middle school. The whole middle school thing, I feel like they're being treated better. And I understand why they're doing it. I understand why the middle schools are going into the high school. But at the same time, it also, it makes me very upset, as well as I know a lot of other people. It makes them, to get to this point, be a senior in high school, and then you, all of a sudden, you're saying that you're still going, you're gonna be, I'm still gonna be in my basement this year, but some middle schoolers are gonna be able to go to my school. And that, I know that has a lot of people that don't like that. And then another thing is emails. I've talked to a lot of people. I've been trying to get people to email you guys to let them know, let you guys know they don't like this. They want to go back to school, and a lot of people feel that their voices aren't heard. I get a lot of responses like, well, it doesn't really matter what we say. Whatever we say, they're not really gonna listen to us kind of thing. And I mean, I feel like people need to know that what they have to say you guys actually care about. It's because I know you guys do. I feel like a lot of people are getting responses that, he goes, well, we'll do our best. And I understand that, but I feel like a lot of people feel like their voices aren't being heard right now. I'm going to college next year, and I don't feel like I'm gonna be ready at all. I've been sitting in my basement all day, and I'm gonna be expected to live on my own pretty soon. And then last, we have the best Wi-Fi we can get, and our router still crashes about once a day at least. It's pretty rough. We have the best possible thing we can get, the best package, all this good stuff, and we are still experiencing slow Wi-Fi with four people on the plan, and it just crashes routinely about third, fourth period for no reason at all. And we've done everything we can. We have people come out here like almost every single day, and we just...
Okay, thank you very much. Next up, I have a letter from Joel Fisher, which I will read. He submitted it well enough advanced that I got to run through it once, but I'll do my best to get through as much as I can in two minutes. Again, this is from Joel Fisher. "My name is Joel Fisher, and I'm a second-year teaching in the Parkway School District. I teach music at both Parkway North and Parkway West High Schools. I wish I could be here to speak in person, but I'm currently at music rehearsal for Parkway West Marching Band in preparation for the home football game scheduled for Friday. First, I want to express public thanks to administrative teams and board members for the constant work you've been doing to provide opportunities for students and teachers within the district. I know that the work has been constant over a long period of time. I'm a proud Parkway employee, and I'm gracious for the schedule that we've been given for Q1. Given the announcement from Sam Page on Monday, I'm disappointed but not surprised that an elected official who was on the ballot in November reversed a previous decision that was unpopular with many families in the St. Louis region. I acknowledge that politics play a huge role in our current world and influence decisions that are made. My purpose tonight is to express a sentiment that has been echoed by many colleagues and conversations I have had with them since the end of 1920 school year. The main sentiments are simple. Teachers need physical and mental time to come to terms with any major shifts that have and will likely occur. Teachers are anxious. Some have started to lay out materials and curriculum for their classes next quarter since the scheduling announcement last week. Based on the decision for high school to remain virtual in Q2, my anxiety was able to settle, knowing that I would be able to teach classes I was originally scheduled to teach and continue work with my students. I was also able to start visualizing how that teaching would occur. To simplify that thought, there would be continuity from Q1 to Q2. We are now one week closer to the start of Q2, and I am concerned with the timing of this week's announcement as we get closer to Q2. My anxiety is also high, given the sudden nature of this meeting. To be clear, the concerns I am expressing are not for or against a particular learning plan, but rather the idea of major change occurring without time to both mentally and physically prepare for this. We're just over two weeks away from teaching new courses at Q2 in high school, and to have a major shift will disrupt the continuity of teaching and learning. It's my assumption that there'll be a window of time where human resources, we have shuffle individuals around to cover all person, in-person teaching needs should a major decision be made tonight. And there, the rest of it goes on. I will provide the rest of the board with those comments. Next up, speaking is Ken Sussman.
Good evening. I'm a teacher at Parkway North and Parkway Central High School. Everyone knows that virtual learning is not as good as in-person learning. It's never been in question. My daughter's in second grade at Craig, and I would love for her to be back in person. CDC has made it very clear that there are two things required for a safe opening: masks and social distancing. Parkway can mandate masks. But Parkway's already made it clear that social distancing cannot be guaranteed and shouldn't be expected. In other words, Parkway can't provide one of the two most important things needed to open. Fifty percent's not all that good. Parkway has provided a top-notch education for decades by remaining student-centered. Part of our mission is to help students prepare for an ever-changing world, and I believe in our mission. But I also know that the people who implement the mission, day in and day out, are not the children. They're the adults. Children are our priority, and they have done very well throughout this pandemic. But it's the adults who teach the children who are at risk. Teachers fight to protect kids year in and year out. But this pandemic means that we have to fight for ourselves now, too. Putting us back in buildings means putting many of us in danger. North High has a terrible H-back system. Central and North both have small classrooms. West High is gonna be housing eighth graders from West Middle. South High has 1,600 kids. Asking any teachers who aren't absolutely necessary to be in the buildings is not being caring for our staff or for the kids who count on that staff to learn. We're about to enter the flu season. Teachers cross all demographic boundaries in terms of race, gender, health, and more. Teachers are gonna get sick. Teachers are gonna have complications. Some are gonna be hospitalized, and unfortunately, some may die. This is not forever. If we make good decisions now, it's gonna end sooner. If we make bad decisions now, it's gonna take longer. We could be okay. But what are the mental health problems that we're gonna have if we have to say goodbye to a teacher or a colleague or a parent or a principal, a custodian, a bus driver, a friend, a student on a Zoom funeral? The kids have gotta come first, no question, but it cannot be at the expense of the adults. So, everyone else doing it's not good enough reason to pick it up ourselves, right?
Thank you very much. Next up is Ashley Ansel.
There we are. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'll be quick because I don't have a lot of time. I'm an advocate for in-person learning. As a parent, I constantly stress the importance of responsibility, ownership, and accountability. These are components I strongly believe are vital to the growth and development of my children into successful, thought-provoking, competent, and capable individuals. I mention this as background for why I hold these same expectations for any person in any role, including the Parkway Board and Superintendent. You all currently hold or have held roles outside the Board. Wouldn't you want the same transparency and accountability from your own leadership teams? Mr. Todd, Valley Technology's mission statement describes providing superior products and services of exceptional value. That measure of success would be hard to achieve in a strictly virtual environment. Ms. Hopper, as a senior research coordinator in the Division of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry, is the recommendation for children and adolescents to be screen-bound and socially isolated seven to 12 hours a day really in their best interest. Mr. Schindler, how is gateway greening overcoming the hurdles of virtual learning? I think it would be hard to hold hands on agricultural and gardening demonstrations and programs from afar, or is that organization still able to host live, in-person demonstrations for participants, including kids? Ms. Davis, as part of your extensive history in the world of strategy, what is the strategy for getting all the kids back in school? Isn't nearly seven months a reasonable amount of time to strategize a plan for a school year that began a month and a half ago? Mr. Seltzer, your bio on Seltzer and Seltzer states, "When a new client hires me, I like to tell them it's my problem now. I let them outsource their stress and anxiety to me, and then I get to work solving their problems. I work relentlessly for my clients, and that starts with communication. I return every phone call and answer every email immediately so that I can achieve a successful result for my client as soon as possible. Consider the Parkway community as your client, and we've hired you. We've presented a multitude of problems, but are now asking for transparency."
Okay, thank you. Next up is Dee Li Vang.
I don't believe they are in attendance, President Todd.
Okay, we'll go back and check on Sarah Boyce. Was she able to connect?
No.
Okay. Once again, thank you all for your comments this evening, those of you who shared your comments. As I said, you will receive a response on behalf of the Board of Education very soon. Let's see, next on our agenda is the approval of the agenda itself. So, may I have a motion in a second to approve the agenda for the special meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for October 7th, 2020?
So moved.
On favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Yes. We have only one item on the agenda tonight, it's an action item. That is the updated recommendation regarding high school teaching and learning model. So I will call in Dr. Marty to kick that off.
Well, good evening, board members, administrators, community members, parents, teachers, and educators, and students. We recognize we have a large group of individuals tuning in to our board meeting this evening, and thank you for joining us. We certainly have a wide variety of most worthy and heartfelt messages, and I want to thank each of you for expressing that. The board members, administrators have been receiving a lot of messages, and we appreciate every message that we've received. We've tried our best to respond to those. We know that your message to us is very sincere, it's heartfelt. It's very important for you to be heard. We want to let you know that we value your experiences, your preferences, and certainly your desires. COVID-19 has caused a great deal of disturbance and interruptions in our lives, all of us. It's unfortunately caused a level of positioning and polarization also in our society, and unfortunately, even here in Parkway. Our school board administration find themselves in a rather no-win situation. And that's, sometimes we find that in a lot of ways, particularly right now. Our decision appears to, if we make decisions that may look like we're affecting individuals or various groups, or we've not taken into full account, nor some of the needs and desires of others. I want to profess that, in my mind, it does not have to be like this. And this is why. Since May, Parkway has had two overriding goals: ensuring the health and safety of all students and staff, and maintaining our wonderful tradition of quality teaching and learning and opportunities for all our students. I profess that we can deliver on both of these goals. We do not have to choose one or the other, or put one off to the side. We can and have to achieve both and not have them in conflict. So in a moment, I'm going to ask Dr. Robin Wallen, our Director of Health Services, to review once again data and thresholds and some current information from the region in terms of what's happening with health and safety and data. We have indicated that county and regional data would be one of the indicators of decision-making in our process to determine when it was safe for students and staff to return. We had certainly some other indicators as well. What data and information are we receiving from other districts that have had students back? And what have been their experiences? What is their data and their experiences? We'll share some of that tonight. We also said that we'd also rely on some of our local experiences, some of our athletic teams back, Adventure Club. What is happening locally here in Parkway? We'll talk about that as well. In addition, since early summer months, Parkway officials have been purchasing personal protective devices. We've developed building safety measures, and in all schools have developed personal procedures, personnel protocols, I should say, and more. Dr. Watson will review and share some of those in just a moment after Dr. Wallen's comments. Also, most importantly, our Human Resources Department has worked very closely with our staff. They have determined which staff have health and medical situations or conditions which cause them to work remotely. And to their, they continue to meet with individuals who have other potential needs or items or suggestions on how some of their conditions may affect their work. Dr. Bogus and Dr. Cohen have continued to meet with those individuals. Now, I want to just, teaching and learning work. When it comes to teaching and learning, I would profess, and I believe this to be true, no school district has delivered a more quality virtual learning experience than our Parkway educators. We have provided live instruction, clear expectations, office hours. Our students, our teachers and students have been able to meet virtually, and our teachers have gone to the nth degree to try to provide for needs. Our educators have stepped up to provide countless hours of professionalism, and they have grown as individuals, and we're very, very proud of them. But the reality is, as we have heard tonight, not all students have found success in the virtual experience. We have students that have identified in learning needs, such as students with IEPs. We have students with English learning needs. We have students who are very young, who have never been in school before. Now they've been thrashed into the virtual world. We have students with social, emotional, mental health needs, which is difficult to address in virtual world. And we have students who do receive targeted interventions to complement their daily work. Not all have been successful, and this is not the fault of our educators. It is simply just a fact of some learning styles and learning needs among our student body. We have certainly provided opportunities to try to understand learning preferences from our students, and we also have given our parents an opportunity to weigh in on what they prefer their students to have as we do suggest we come back in person. We have in Parkway, have really set up a situation where we want our virtual teachers and our in-person teachers to have distinct responsibilities. It's very difficult, even though some districts are doing that, to expect teachers to deliver both virtual and in-person teaching at the same time. So we want to continue our quality work and make sure that our teachers, educators have a distinct responsibility to provide for the student needs, and we have quality virtual and quality in-person instruction. So, I'd like now to call on Dr. Wallen, who has certainly guided us, been an important resource in our work, to again provide some updated information for our board and our community relative to data thresholds and health and safety information. Dr. Wallen.
Thank you, Dr. Marty. President Todd, members of the board, Mrs. Stover, I'm really pleased to have this opportunity to share with you once again tonight the updated COVID-19 community health indicators for your consideration as we plan for reentry of students into our schools. Next slide, please. Tonight, we will briefly review some of the trends that we're seeing in the community spread in St. Louis County and more specifically in our youth. I will update you with information about positivity rates and the decreasing rate of new cases seen in youth across our region. I've also pulled some information about COVID activity in school districts that are in session for your consideration. Finally, I'll share the new St. Louis County recommendations from the County Executive and the St. Louis County Department of Public Health. The St. Louis County Department of Public Health is collecting data on the daily number of new cases of COVID, and this graph here helps us see visually what's been happening in the county since the onset of the pandemic. The data are collected daily and include all new cases among St. Louis County residents. This is the last 14 days of confirmed or probable COVID cases they have reported using a seven-day moving average by diagnosis date for the last two weeks of September. Among St. Louis County residents, we've seen a decrease... Among St. Louis County residents, we've seen a decrease from 171.7 to 151 cases per day, then again, an increase to 177.7 cases per day. And despite that volatility, the net change over the two-week period was plus 3.4%. So the current rate of daily diagnosis remains very high. This is a summary of the key indicators provided by Edplus after our view of the publicly available data sets. Here you see the county transmission rate of 4.1%, which is the lowest that we've seen since the pandemic began. Unfortunately, the positivity rate elsewhere in the state is much higher. This rate tells us that St. Louis County has adequate, adequate testing capacity. Also on the chart, you see the seven-day average of daily new cases per 100,000. And note the current 927 to 103 average of 15.48, which is significantly lower than all the surrounding counties and the state as a whole. Our transmission rate continues to sit at about 1.02 for the third week in a row, which means that the rate of transmission is continuing to grow in our region, but just slightly. We're seeing improved metrics in the St. Louis County and city for the 14-day comparison of change in new cases, which you can see here on this very colorful chart by the green boxes on the left-hand, the two left-hand columns there for the county and the city. The Health Department has also published this recent graph depicting the rate of new COVID-19 diagnosis by age group for St. Louis County residences ages 19 and under for the last two weeks of September. The average rate of new COVID-19 diagnoses for youth ages 15 to 19 decreased by 16% between 915 and 928. And despite this downward trend, the, the rate among this group still remains higher than, than among their younger age groups, which have converged at about 8.8 cases per 100,000 per day. Over the same period, the daily number of, the number of daily diagnoses increased amongst kids ages zero to four at 24%, five to nine at 54%, and 10 to 14 at 32%. But in contrast, I'll just, next slide, please. We, we all, this is a little bit harder to see, but we, in contrast, we also are able to see some newer data from the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services that has provided more recent data that can be disaggregated by age. And here on this graph, we see depicted a dramatic decrease in the seven-day rolling average of cases in the Parkway geographic area by patient age for ages 15 to 17. It's a very impressive drop in average cases, and this has all happened since the end of September. This is another way to view the Parkway geographic community data for youth. Here you see there are, there were 20 cases in the past 14 days for youth in ages 15 to 19 that reside in the Parkway School District. This is down from, from 40 cases in the previous week, so that is definitely an improvement. The positivity rate, which are the most recent data that we have, that we have available, show a rate of 10.02 in Parkway and 8.78 in the county for youth ages 15 to 19. I think it's also helpful that we look at other school districts in our area that have similar numbers of students and rates of infection in youth ages 15 to 19. Here you see the COVID-19 active cases dashboard for Francis Howell School District. They currently have 27 students and eight staff members who are in isolation for positive tests. In addition, they currently have 443 students and 14 staff members who are quarantined due to school-related exposures. So these are just the cases for, that are currently quarantined or isolated. Next slide. Wentzville, another district of similar size to Parkway, is reporting that they have 10 total active employee cases and 112 active employee exposures. They currently have 12 active positive student cases and 142 active student exposures. And finally, Fort Zumwalt, they only report their weekly positive cases, and they've seen eight staff members and 18 students who are positive the week of September 27th through October 3rd. I think what we, what we see here in these school districts is that they have experienced some disruption in their, in their education, but they've been able to do school. And I think we can learn a lot from, from them and for, from the ways that they are using mitigation factors to prevent and then contact tracing to control the spread of illness in the school setting. We would, we certainly will address exposures in our school district in similar ways. That said, you know, these school districts have been successful at in-person education, and despite the ongoing realities of the impact of our ongoing current pandemic. And finally, of significant importance to us is the advice of our county public health officials. On Monday, October 5th, Sam Page, St. Louis County Executive, and Spring Schmidt, Acting Director of the St. Louis County Department of Public Health, sent a letter to county superintendents. Dr. Schmidt wrote, "Our recent data continues to show that the trends in high school age students are slowly declining, and the rate of new cases is similar to the overall rate for new cases in the county." At this time, St. Louis County Department of Public Health is again modifying our recommendations to include planning for how high school students can engage in additional forms of in-person learning. So that concludes my data update this evening, and I'm happy to address any questions that you may have.
Well, Board members, maybe we can just hold those questions, and Dr. Wallen will be with us. Thank you, Dr. Wallen, very much. Dr. Watson, I've asked her to just kind of give an overview to some of the work, as I indicated. We have been working since very early in the summer to make sure our schools are supplied with a personal, personal protective devices, and certainly developing protocols as well as designing our buildings to be safe. So Dr. Watson is just going to cover overview to show again that we can provide the help for the health and safety of our students, along with providing a quality teaching and learning experience. So, Dr. Watson.
Thank you, Dr. Marty. So of course, what we've all heard is our students will be expected and our staff will be expected to wear cloth face coverings and masks. We will be ensuring that high-touch surfaces are cleaned frequently. Our Director of Facilities has put together guidelines for our custodial teams in our schools. Our principals have designated specific doors for entering and exiting, more doors than usual, based on how students can enter and exit safely. In addition, we have signage to help students determine which doors to use. We will be adding visual aids on the floors and walls to illustrate traffic flow and social distancing. The principals have been tasked to see if they can make halls one-way for students as they navigate throughout the building. We have asked that all unnecessary furniture, tables, chairs, lighting, shelving, and so forth, be removed from classrooms to provide as much space as possible. We will be limiting the use of common areas. Students will not be sharing supplies unless there are, there's a strict protocol in place for cleaning in between use. All students will sit in assigned seats during class and during lunch. This will help in the case of contact tracing. We will restrict hallway use and have less passing periods than in the past. Student desks and tables are to be arranged to maximize space between students. Desks are to be turned to face in the same direction, and students will be positioned at tables accordingly. Of course, adhering to social distancing guidelines, if possible. We will be designating time for handwashing. We will encourage our educators to identify and prioritize any outdoor instructional activities if possible. Our coordinators from our Teaching, Learning, and Accountability Department have worked with teachers to review courses that typically call for close interactions and have developed protocols on how to move forward safely with particular courses. In addition, we have protocols that will be in place for individuals who may need to drop something off for a student in addition to how parents and guardians can safely pick up students early from school. We have also purchased some barriers. Each teacher will have a barrier that they can utilize in their classroom when they want to use proximity to work side-by-side with a student. In addition, we have provided barriers for our front office staff. Those are just a few of the items that we have done as we work on helping our buildings be as safe as possible for our students and our staff.
Thank you, Dr. Watson, and again, the board members have further questions, we can ask questions later. I will just say that, you know, we really are in the process of beginning as we think about our K population that already we decided to return in last week's meeting, and potentially as we now think about the high school, to certainly make everyone aware of all these procedures. And that's why we're also very, you know, very much willing, wanting to have a transition period to make sure we can teach these behaviors and protocols to our students and, and also to our staff. So I wanted, before I make the recommendation statement to the board, I want to just comment, you've heard me, board members, fellow administrators, and probably many of you use three terms over the summer and into the school year that have been for me, self-talk and through this, and helpful. We need to think about this era, we need to be flexible, we need to be nimble, we need to be patient. I bring those three words back because one of the challenges that I personally have to ask myself, what has changed from last week's recommendation that I made to you to tonight? And why am I, and changing, well, I will show you in a minute, we're as a team and administrators taking a different route. So I personally will talk about my journey, what I've experienced, and why I now prepare to make a different and take a different, flexible approach here. I will start by saying that over the last week and even before, I personally have been concerned about the data. We have had more student failures in our high school at this time, more than I, I think is acceptable for Parkway, and even though, again, our teachers have worked so hard and done such a great job, we are experiencing certainly more failures at this point of students in our high school. And we've also experienced, as you heard tonight, a lot of students who are frustrated, anxious, and depressed in the, in the situation they find themselves. Secondly, I had the opportunity over the last week or week and a half to attend athletic events. And in doing so, I saw adults and students doing a wonderful job of practicing the best they could, even in athletic situations, social distancing, face mask, face coverings, and certainly be conscious of, of safety measures that we have put in place. Mike Roth has told me that practices are going very, very well, and that while we've had, I think, some minor instances that we had to address overall for several weeks now, our athletic practices, other events that we have had, including some athletic events on our own campus, have gone very well. Thirdly, as we begin to really look at the recommendation we made last week, Dr. Matheson and Dr. Beckner worked very, very hard to look at that whole concept of targeted interventions. And I think we could have delivered and done a good job, but it certainly was going to be challenging to, to really supply the necessary needs that students had. So again, as we examine that schedule, the, the stress on teachers, the opportunities for students to receive that, while we could deliver on it, it was going to certainly be challenging. And then finally, it has been, we have been influenced by Dr. Page and the data that we have seen Dr. Wallen address. So again, one of our indicators was certainly to use data, and certainly it has, it has changed in the last week, and, and certainly, again, we were watching that data very closely before last week's recommendation. So at this time, Nikki, if you put up the recommendation that I'm, I'm making to the board tonight. So it would be my recommendation to the board and our recommendation for my leadership team to bring high school students back in person during the second quarter. And as soon as we can do so effectively and efficiently. What this means is we have some work to do. We're obviously already deeply into scheduling our K5 and our 612 schedules and staffing, and we want to be able to effectively make sure our parents who, who may want to make some changes can also, as we did with our K8, have some time to let us know if there's been any changes in preference. And then we go to work to staff our high schools effectively and efficiently, meaning to do so, so we have the best instructional layout for both the virtual and in-person, as I indicated before. Those are basically two separate approaches in Parkway that we're taking. So Board members, that is our recommendation to you tonight. I believe that we can, and once again, I want to say, I believe that we can both ensure the health and safety of our students is outlined by Dr. Watson and the continued work we're doing with our principals, and the work that we'll lay out in the transition of bringing students back and staff back. And I believe that we can effectively maintain just the wonderful work of making sure we have outstanding teaching and effective learning here in Parkway in this recommendation and the recommendation we made last week. So, Mr. Todd, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Marty, and I'll just echo your comments about the response that we've gotten from parents and teachers and, and students. We've, up until this past week, we hadn't heard from very many students, and we've heard from a number of them in the last week. We heard some tonight speak, so we appreciate everyone's feedback, and we are doing our best to, to hear everyone and listen to everyone's messages and understand your perspective, so we appreciate that. I have, I'll, I'll start with the first question. What, with this plan, you're saying sometime in the second quarter, is that halfway through, maybe a week or two in the, in time for finals, what, you know, give us, give us a little bit of an idea?
Very, very fair question, and I know Dr. Watson, Dr. Beckner, Dr. Matheson are all on. I will just say, again, we would like to move as, as soon as we can. Of course, we're deeply involved right now in K5 and 612, and, and people are really working at that. Principals, as long as some of our schedulers, and of course, we'd have to wait till data is returned from parents. But Dr. Becker, Dr. Watson, some thoughts without the being, you know, tying ourselves to a commitment. I, I think, again, we would, we certainly would want to do it as soon as we possibly could. Dr. Watson, Dr. Beckner, Dr. Matheson, anyone?
That is exactly correct, Dr. Marty. We have quite a bit of planning to do. Since we had the previous recommendation, we did not focus on the work that needed to be done to move high school students to virtual campus and back to in-person. Our focus was on elementary and middle, since we knew they were coming back to school. So we are behind in the process that we need to utilize to move forward. And so at this time, I cannot put a date on when high school students could return. We are doing our best. We want our administrators to, you know, who are working on these schedules to get about five hours of sleep every night if they can, because they are working non-stop, many, many long hours. So as soon as we can do it, where kids will have effective schedules, the right plans are in place, we'll do our, our best as quickly as possible, but during second quarter, you know, not anticipating it's the end of second quarter, but during second quarter.
I'll, I'll go next. We've, obviously, this is not our first meeting on this issue, and one of the realities of our situation is that there are no great options, given the climate of the world at this moment. But I do think that this recommendation goes a long way towards at least giving options and choices to as many groups of people as possible, so that people can make the right decisions for their students and their families. The one party that I would like to see us looking out for, though, is the, the teachers we've heard from tonight. So, Dr. Watson, you talked a little bit about some of the safeguards we're putting into place as far as procedures in our buildings. Mr. Bogus, or Dr. Bogus, anybody else who wants to chime in on things that we can put in place to help teachers to meet teachers' needs, to help teachers feel safe and comfortable if, you know, when we do go back. So I'm not sure who the proper person to address this is, but if someone could speak to that situation.
I'll, I'll just start, and then we can go on. We have ordered safe cleaner for every single classroom, along with, you know, paper towels or wipes. So teachers will have the ability to clean as they feel appropriate, as they want to, for them to feel comfortable. We will be asking our students, when they are leaving classrooms, to help wipe down their desks and their chairs, because of course, the cleaner we purchased is very similar to soap and water, and it is safe for our students to utilize. Because of course, the cleaner we purchased is very similar to soap and water, and it is safe for our students to utilize. And for our teachers to utilize. We have purchased all of our teachers a mask. We have hand sanitizer for every single classroom and we have refills and we are ready to go to make sure teachers have that when they need it. Some of our teachers, based on the students that they serve, will have clear masks. So students can see their lips and mouths as they are instructing. Again, I mentioned the barriers earlier for teachers. In addition to working with their administrator, if they have some specific needs that need to be addressed, our administrators are going to do their very, very best to help make those accommodations in addition to the work that HR has been doing. I might have missed a couple of things, so somebody else can pick up where I may have forgotten something.
I will just say, speaking to other superintendents, again, Francis Howell, superintendent, some in Jefferson County. One of the, when we asked them as superintendents when we meet, you know, what, what would you be advised? They just say, you know, generally their students have been very compliant, students have, it has not been a difficulty in districts for their students to be wearing face coverings. But they also say, keep reminding your staff that they have to be conscious of their behaviors, not only in school, but outside. And so, again, just emphasizing good practices among our operational staff, among our staff, all of us have responsibility. They really emphasize that, that they continually harp away that it's everybody's responsibility and even go so far as saying, and it's our parents' responsibility as well. It's our community responsibility. So I think, you know, we have to take care of one another. Everybody has to be reminded of safe practices in school, out of school, and their relationship among each other when they're in school as well.
And I'll add one more follow-up question. We heard from a number of parents and students today, and I'm sure most of, or a lot of them would like to see us tonight saying, we're gonna do this on Monday. Dr. Beckner, if you could talk a little bit about what goes into planning for a re-entry like we're contemplating?
Sure. So there are multiple steps in that process. So even this week, we've met multiple times with our high school principals, the assistant principals who are in charge of building the schedule. Ultimately, the, in this case, because we want to ensure that all of our students have a quality learning experience, both the students who are in person and the students who are learning online, we want to make sure that we have staff who are placed effectively to ensure that those students have a really high quality experience in all of those settings. So that really means that a lot of the work has to happen on the staffing side. So it's really a multi-step process. The first one will start if the board approves Dr. Marty's recommendation tonight with allowing our families of high school students to tomorrow confirm whether the, they want to continue with the preference they indicated back in July, or if they want to change that preference based on this recommendation. That will give us the final numbers to know how many students are saying that they want to continue learning virtually and how many students want to return in person. Once we have those numbers, we have to look at the courses those students have requested. And then we have to assign staff to each of those courses and ensure that we can deliver all of those courses effectively in the second quarter. That process then means moving our staff around. So practically speaking, it may mean that currently I teach these three classes. Well, second quarter, I might teach two of those classes in a different class. And I have to be prepared, you know, to do that and be prepared to teach those classes. It may mean that some of my classes are in person, some of them are virtual. It may mean that if I indicated that I want to teach or I'm willing to teach either virtually or in person, that I will, as a teacher, be teaching one or the other. So that requires Dr. Bogus to then meet with all of the principals and assign teachers, both to their, either the virtual campus or the in-person setting or a blend of the two. And once we have that information and only once we have that process complete, which takes some time, we then begin building student schedules and building the school master schedule, which, as I shared during our last meeting, is typically a process that takes place over four to six months. And in this case, we are not afforded four to six months. We are afforded really, you know, a really short period of time, which is why when Dr. Watson said earlier, we have a lot of planning to do. We have a lot of planning to do, both on the staffing side, the scheduling side. Also ensuring all of the things we talked about tonight with safety, we have to finalize a high school schedule. Because we know that high school students have three classes typically in an academic lab. And we need to evaluate that process. And we began that today with our high school principals and discussion and going through all that. So there are multiple pieces that have to take place, which is why we are not willing to just turn this around and do it quickly. Because we're really committed to ensuring that our students, whether they're learning virtually or they're learning in person, that they have the highest quality possible educational experience that they could have. There are things that we could do to do it quickly, and it would result in a lower quality experience for our students. And frankly, we're not willing to sacrifice our students for the sake of expediency. So we have, when we say we have planning to do, those are processes that we are already working at a, and what would I would consider an extremely accelerated rate. But we're really committed to our kids, really committed to making sure that if the board approves this recommendation, that it's done well. That we have really quality teaching and learning practices in place, that we have high quality educators in both settings, that we have a high quality process. Make sure that our kids can learn at a high level. So those are just some of the pieces that we have to consider. And those are just to name some of the biggest ones. There are obviously many additional ones beyond that. But those are the key pieces that have to take place between now and the time that we could say confidently, we're ready to bring our students back.
Last week, we talked about the eighth grade at West Middle coming to West High. What happens with them?
Our eighth graders will not be able to be at West High if we have our high school students in session. So they will go back to West Middle. And you know the reason why we moved them? Because, one, we had the opportunity. We had West High very accessible. And we know how crowded that middle school is. But based on the recommendation, if we move forward, our eighth graders will go back to West Middle. We do know that some of our parents made, changed their preference when they found out that our middle school, you know, that our eighth graders were going to go to the high school for second quarter. So if this recommendation is approved, we will go back to our West Middle parents and ask them to confirm or change their preference, once again, based on this change.
Perhaps this is a question for Dr. Marty, but if we were to approve this recommendation, I assume we'll keep looking at the metrics that we've been monitoring all along. And this isn't, you know, a one-way street, right? If the numbers start to look the other way, we're flexible and nimble, as you say, enough to revert or reverse course, right?
Absolutely. And I should have, I should have said that. I should, that always needs to be clarified. Absolutely. And, you know, once, as we said last week with the eighth, yeah, the kindergarten through eighth grade decision. Once we establish the in-person and the virtual choices, options, certainly virtual will be virtual. That'll be ongoing. The in-person has, you know, as we talked about already in the summer, I mean, we're either in-person fully, we're in-person hybrid, or we're back to a virtual mode if the data indicates we cannot be in school. So we'll be observing that weekly and we'll be sharing that. We'll be transparent as Dr. Wallen said. We will be continually the shared app, but we will also be very observant with that data and what it means to Parkway and our health and safety. Thanks, Kevin, for, Mr. Seltzer, for bringing that up.
And if I could just add something, we're also going to be tracking the data from our own school district in a similar fashion that other districts are doing on their dashboard. So we will be, you know, very transparent with the the amount of isolation and quarantine that we're seeing in students and staff on an ongoing basis.
You know, I think, I think we have to be honest. I mean, our first quarter was seamless. We had, well, we had some situation to deal with. We had students, you know, with, one of our goals was a good start, assurance and certainty. Certainly, we're moving into a greater risk situation here. But again, you know, as you heard tonight, there's, there's risks also for not having our students in school as well. So as, again, other superintendents have shared with us, there are situations. We have contact tracers now trained in all our schools, so we certainly are at a better point than we were back in the summer months. We've learned that we have to have personnel in place and we've certainly learned a lot from what, and we'll continue to hear from others. In fact, I'm gonna make sure that we're, my team is much more tied now to some of the work going on in these other districts. We will become much more connected now if we would make this decision tonight.
Again, Dr. Matheson and Dr. Beckner, one of the things you brought up was, one of our goals coming out of last week was to see if we could provide targeted interventions at the high school level for particular students. And over the last week, as you've looked into those, just have hit roadblock after roadblock. So can you just talk a little bit more about what some of the problems were with making that happen as compared to bringing everybody back?
Sure. There's one of the biggest pieces is trying to figure out the number of students that would be able to be enabled to access the interventions. For instance, if we were to look at students just solely on failure rates from first quarter, those numbers are in multiple, students with multiple Fs. Let's say those numbers were fairly high. To be able to meet their needs in an in-person setting while still them learning in a distance learning part was, was going to be difficult. Not impossible, but difficult. Also, we're looking at where we draw and work with our students with special needs. And the ability to meet the needs of all students wasn't there. So where do we say, what level of students are we are able to assist? Rather than assisting all students. And those are tough decisions to make. Those are, those are very difficult. Because if you're a family that's right on that line, on that bubble, and we know that your student is struggling, maybe they're a C student now getting a D or a B student now getting a C, or they're struggling with their I, some things within their IEP, but yet don't meet the requirements that we would have because of the limited number of students that we would, we would be able to have in the building. That, that becomes problematic because we're not able to serve all kids. And this is, in this situation, we would be able to serve all students that would, that would want the in-person learning.
I'll jump in real fast here. I guess one thing that I guess weighs on me as a board member is the fact that there is no easy choice. Kevin Seltzer kind of referred to that earlier. And the fact that, um, even if we do approve the recommendation tonight, it is not going to be an easy time. Bring them back to K through eight, bring them back to high school, and there will be disruptions. And I think we need to be very clear that as we look at the other districts, there are numbers of kids being isolated, and there are number of kids being quarantined. There are teachers being isolated and teachers being quarantined. It will not be an easy time. I think we all need to realize that it's gonna be a difficult time for the administration, for the principals, for the staff and for the teachers. I do, as a board member, I do not envy your positions. This is gonna be a rough time ahead of us. But kind of going back to Dr. Marty's comments earlier, as a community, we need to follow the guidelines as best we can. So we can keep on this path of getting our kids back in the schools. Because if we do have another outbreak, it's gonna be tough. It's gonna be rough. But we all need to wear our masks, follow the guidelines, and do the best we can as both a district and as a region right now. For not just for our kids, but for the whole region. We need to do a better job. So more a comment than a question, but I'll leave it there.
In a certain way, this builds on what Matt just said. He actually took some of the things that I was going to say about we are, if we make this decision tonight, we are going into a situation that may have more inherent risk. And as Matt said, we all have to work together on this. And I think that we need clear and constant communication that we believe kids being in school is important. And everybody who's involved in that, whether you're a parent or a teacher or a student, especially since we're now talking about students who have a greater level of independence than our K through eight students. Our behavior outside of the schools is going to profoundly affect what happens inside the schools. And I think we all need to keep that in mind. I also think that communications, as far as our teachers go, are really important. I know that this planning takes time, but teachers need to be able to jump in there and get the planning done they need to do as soon as they can know what's going on. So I want to keep our teachers in the loop. I want to keep our families in the loop. Because this is a choice we're making together and we all have to stick together on it, should we make that choice.
This is obviously a very difficult decision. But what is the trade-off? Your kids are sitting at home, depressed, upset, isolated, et cetera. Or they could be in school where they could be with their friends, with their teachers, with the learning process taking place. There's no best decision here whatsoever. But I think for the mental health and the needs of students, you know, being in school is probably the best opportunity for them. And I have complete confidence in our administration, our teachers, our principals, our kids. Our kids will help to make this work. Our parents will help to make this work. And I think that this is the direction we need to go. Because I think in the long run, it's gonna be better for our students not to continue to be isolated at home and not have the opportunity of their education in school as such.
I'll just say also, I'll reiterate what I said last week, that our school board feels the weight of this decision. I, I struggle with the decision because I hear what our teachers are saying and I, I, but we need you. We need our educators. And I'm, we're gonna have to trust administration that they're going to come to terms with our teachers on how to continue to make them feel safe and protected, but yet be able to fulfill the responsibility that we have to educate our students. I do, am concerned for our students who are struggling. And I respect the choice that parents are having between virtual and in-person. We all have to do what's right for our own families. But I also agree with what my colleagues have said, that we all have a responsibility to watch our conduct. We have to ensure that we are being responsible in what we are doing outside of school, as well as what we were doing inside of school. And I trust that we all are up to that challenge to, because we have to make this work. We have no choice. It has to work. And it's a huge responsibility. And I agree that we need to just stay, stay steady, watch the data. If the numbers change, we know we've got a decent, a fairly decent virtual program that we can go back to. It's not perfect. Maybe there's ways to continue to improve upon that. We've got a backup plan to possibly help our, our struggling learners in, in person, if and when that time comes. But this is a huge challenge and it takes everybody doing their part to make it work. But we cannot do this without our teachers. We need you. And we need to help make sure that they're comfortable in what they're doing when they're coming back. And we need our students and our families to please be responsible and make the choice that you feel is right for your family. Thank you.
This is Hopper. And board members, this is maybe an opportunity. I want to just state that you heard Pat, the president of the Parkway Education Association tonight. And I certainly understand his questions, his advocacy. But I want to assure you, we have a wonderful working relationship with Mr. McPartland, all of us, all SAT members. There's probably not too many days where we're not working with him from an HR standpoint, from, from concerns that he raises. So I want to assure you and the public that the teachers and the administration are not at odds here. We heard some concerns tonight, very legitimate from our staff. We've been hearing them. And we will continually work with our staff and Mr. McPartland to address their needs in preparation and transition. And also address, you know, their, their needs. And so, again, we're fortunate in Parkway to have good leadership in our teachers association. It is, you know, some people may suggest, you know, that there's a lot of politics. No, they're, they're very sincere in their concerns. And they do an excellent job. We can't work without them. And we have a working relationship that is very positive and we'll continue that and enhance that.
I do have one question for Dr. Beckner or Dr. Watson. When, when parents are re-surveyed, Dr. Beckner said it would be based on what they're When, when parents are re-surveyed, Dr. Beckner said it would be based on what their July preference was. But parents have, were recently re-surveyed in September. So when, can there just be clarification that when a parent is surveyed, which, you know, that they, they know which point they're, they're making their selection from?
Yes, when we send the survey, it will include what we have on record. So we'll say, for example, you know, I have children in Parkway, it would say Lincoln Beckner. We have on record that you've chosen this. And here's what you said about bus transportation. If that's still accurate, you don't need to do anything. But if you want to change that, here's the link where you can go in and change that.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for Robin. We obviously were all here last week. The numbers were what they were last week and the numbers are what they are this week. And in between, obviously, Dr. Page's office has sort of altered their recommendations. We've all kind of looked for you, to you for guidance over the last several months. Where the numbers sit right now, are you comfortable with this recommendation?
Well, I think I just echo what I've heard a lot of people say, that there's really no good, there's nothing, there's just hard decisions. And, and there are problems with both, with both decisions. So I think though, we as a district are prepared to tackle this. And I think we have a lot of structures and plans in place to, to make it as safe as we can. But is, would, is this where I envisioned we would be when we would come back in person? No, but we, you know, we're, we're, we're deep in the mud right now of this pandemic and it doesn't look like it's improving anytime soon. So we're making this decision based on recommendations from public health authorities and reflecting on what other school districts have experienced and hoping that the plans that we have in place will, will be adequate to support this.
Who this is for. But just going back a little bit, several people have talked about community responsibility. And, you know, our responsibility as a community to monitor our behaviors and not engage in risky behaviors inside of school and outside of school. And we also know there are people who don't think the virus is real. We know there are people who are gathering in large groups without a care in the world and we know what happens. So what, what are our options? I mean, obviously, if we, if it happens in school, if someone rips their mask off and we can deal with that. But do we have any options if we know that a child or a family or a group of kids is gathering in unsafe ways out, outside of school and then coming into the school? Like, what can we do? Is there anything we can do or how would we handle that?
Well, all of our nurses have gone through contact tracing training. And part of that is learning how to do these really complicated interviews with people that may be at risk or have been exposed. And so we, we do occasionally hear from individuals who are concerned about a party or something that's happened. And so we, it gives us an opportunity to call families and talk about risk and concern in a confidential manner. So we do have that ability and that's probably would be the most effective way to, to try and address those kinds of concerns. But, and then, you know, if we, if we can get our community to come behind and say, you know, we really are going to do things differently because we need to keep these kids and these teachers safe. And we want to be able to keep school in session. And if we see another huge spike in cases, you know, it's very likely that our public health authorities would recommend closure and we don't want that to happen. So we, we do have a degree of control over what's happening in our, in our community. And, and you can see that the numbers in St. Louis County are significantly better than the rest of the state. And part of the reason for that, I believe, is because of the restrictive measures that have been in place. So because we have more restrictive mitigation measures here, you can see the difference in, in the numbers in St. Louis County. I don't know if I answered your question.
Not sure if there is a good answer, but yeah, I mean, it helps the, the idea of, you know, if we get information, we can make phone calls. And, um, I mean, there's some people that all the reminders in the world aren't going to change their mind on the legitimacy and the danger of this thing. And.
Kristi, on a, on a student discipline side, since I work with the student discipline pieces, something like that that's happening outside of school that doesn't have an access back to the school would not be something we would be able to discipline for. I think Robin said the best, said the best in education and trying to bring our community together and have an understanding at least. Hey, we're, we're having school in session and do your part. And as we all do our part, then we can keep school in session for, for a longer period of time and hopefully for, for forever as we move forward. But there are also freedoms afforded to people outside of school and we have to be a conscientious advocate of those.
Now, if somebody decided to rip their mask off at school or refused to wear it or made a joke of it, then we would take that seriously.
That's correct.
Thank you.
If, if you wouldn't mind, Paul Tandy has just a slide here he'd like to share, just to review a timeline. Just to review again from last week where we're at with, this is for the board and for the public tuning in. Yeah, it's a little element of where we're at with also the potential of the, of the high schools. Paul, do you want to just take a moment?
Sure, Dr. Marty and present time members of the board, just, this is just a continuation of the, the timeline we've been talking about. You can see where we are in October. If the decision tonight is to proceed with high school, keep in mind, we already have the K eight in-person learning experience in the works. So that's already in the works. And if you decide tonight that we want to proceed with the high school, we would immediately proceed tomorrow. We want to go back as we have done with the others to reconfirm their preferences for the second quarter and have a very, very quick turnaround on that. So I'd be, we push that out tomorrow morning along with the announcement and then ask families to get that back to us by noon on, on Friday. And then next week has a lot of things going on. So first of all, next week, because of the K eight thing, we are ready probably on Tuesday to let K eight families who have chosen the in-person experience, let them know what their group assignments are for the blended period, that transition period where they'd be in a few days a week. So let them know what their schedule is like so they can plan for that. At the same time, for the high school, again, we'd be developing the details of the plan and, and what the second quarter would look like, which we don't have right for you tonight, and what that timeline would look like. And then assuming that we have a blended transition period like we've done for K eight, we would also next week, let those high school families know what that looks like in terms of what days of the week and so forth that their family would be on. Moving forward in October, the fourteenth to the twenty first roughly is, again, finalizing and communicating the final class schedules for those K eight families, including the specific bus assignments and which a teacher, which teachers are assigned to which classes. That's previous, like we previously communicated. And as we communicated also, the nineteenth to the twenty third are those in-person transition activities for, for kindergarten through eighth grade. The second quarter begins on October twenty seventh for K eight. And then depending on the high school, that's the plan that we would present to next week. I have a second quarter transition, looks like that has yet to be determined. We're not asking for you to necessarily decide on that tonight because we need to develop that next week. But as we previously talked about, we'll continue our every Thursday newsletter for our families and staff that continues to follow the, the COVID metrics on our community health dashboard. And the thing we would add, once we begin to transition to in-person learning, our detailed numbers by building for positive cases and quarantines. And as we've talked to other school districts that, you know, that are already in person, we, we're starting to learn how that looks and what we need to be doing with that. So we're going to be learning from those districts and provide those, that information on our dashboard to be transparent about, you know, how that is going moving forward once we start in person.
I just a point of clarification, that October twelfth through sixteenth, we will not be prepared, I don't think, to notify high school in-person families of their schedule or group assignment. That timeline hasn't been identified yet. And I think, I'm pretty sure we won't be ready. So if we could just remember, we're just going to focus on K eight during that time.
So last week, we talked about, we, no matter how, well, I assume no matter how we go back with high school, we're going to go from four class periods to three class periods and seventy minute class periods. Would that be the same if we, if we went back into high school? Or is that just if we're in virtual?
It would just be if we're in virtual. A return to in-person learning means a return to things like transportation, food service and other factors that really influence start and end times of school. So it would likely mean a return to the start times that were in place prior to the pandemic and the end times as well, which of course, if you're then looking at, you know, a certain number of classes over the length of a school day, then that would obviously impact the length of the classes. And they would be longer than that seventy minute timeframe that we had identified if we were fully virtual.
I've probably asked enough questions, but I want to do just one more. I'm leaning towards supporting the recommendation just because I think it goes further towards making as many of our constituencies, you know, providing the best outcomes while retaining flexibility. My only reservation is just that, you know, a concern for teachers. And I just, Mike, if you could just talk about what we're doing as far as teachers who have health issues or any other issues that might preclude them entering buildings. And I understand we can't make everyone happy, but can you just talk about what accommodations or what practices we're going to put in place at the high school level?
Yes, good evening, everyone. So one of the things that I can talk about, we're in the middle of K eight scheduling. And so to use that as an example at the moment, we are looking at those staff members that have shared with us a need for virtual instruction and building a schedule, I'll talk about middle school, building a schedule for the students that also choose the virtual instruction and pairing those up. So right now, sharing a little bit of information regarding that, it looks like we have enough virtual teachers by need and by desire to be able to have within each building, at least the larger middle schools, one team of, of virtual teachers. And so the, the work that's done in the meantime is, from the recommendation last week to today, is building the schedule and then staffing it. And so the schedule is driven by the student responses. Once we have the high school responses back by noon on Friday, that will allow the schedulers to build their schedules based on student need. And then for me to mirror the, the staff need to the student need. And so allowing those individuals that, again, the survey that the staff received in September allowed them three choices. One, to come back to Parkway in, in-person instruction. The other one is they were able to declare and, and share a medical need to stay virtual. Or the third option being in-person or virtual. And then there was an additional response question for them to provide more information in terms of staffing their preference and to share more information. And as Dr. Marty alluded to earlier, that's been a large majority of the work that we've done in HR since last week to, through today and, and into the rest of this week and next week. And talking to staff members regarding that are trying to understand more needs and, you know, to determine if they have the ability to come back in person. Do we have the, and can we accommodate that through PPE, all the things that Dr. Watson shared in terms of protective barriers and other things? If the answer is no, then we're looking and having them be the virtual teachers. It does come down to not being able to support everyone based on their desire. But based on need, we've been able to do that up to this point. As Dr. Marty shared, you know, when we look at the, the breakdown overall data, high school doesn't look any different in terms of data than the middle and elementary school by percentage. And so, you know, I, I don't see that there will be that much of a concern except for the high school has a different level of, of specificity in terms of classes that are required by students to be able to graduate. And so we'll need to look into that. And, and so as Dr. Beckner shared, there might be a teacher that taught chemistry at the high school. But if they have got biology certification, we might need an extra biology class virtual. Or we might need an extra biology class in-person. And so doing everything we can to give enough time for that to occur, for them to plan and to have conversations with those teachers by their building principals or their supervising administrator is the work that'll be done if this is approved tonight, starting tomorrow. The work that we will do through HR and the building administrators with the teachers. Kevin, did that answer?
Yes, I appreciate the clarification.
One more question, if I may. One of the concerns I am hearing from parents is that with a transition to in-person, the virtual kids will get left behind. And that the focus will become on the kids in person. And we'll just kind of figure out later what's going on with virtual kids. So can you just reiterate, reaffirm? Give us the confidence that I think I have, but give the public the confidence that we are not going to do that. And the virtual experience will be high quality. Kids and families who choose to stay virtual will not have a second rate experience as compared to our students that are choosing in-person.
Dr. Becker.
Yeah, we've spoken with our, our staff and our principals multiple times about the need to ensure that we have a really high quality program. And I believe I shared with the board last week, we want to make sure that anything we offer to our students is work that we can be proud of, that our community can be proud of, that all of us can stand behind. And that means not providing a virtual experience that in your words, Kristy, would be second rate. But we really want to make sure that we do it well, which is why I know that many people have expressed, get us back as soon as we can. But I can tell you that we are not going to cut corners. We know that it's really important that all of our students, whether they need to stay home and continue learning virtually or they return in person, get a really high quality education, that they get the best, best experience we can possibly provide with high quality teachers who are prepared to do what they need to do to reach all of our students. So we are looking around at, at other models that are out there that other districts are using. And, and in some cases, those models are working well. And in others, we say not good enough for our students. That's why we're going to take our time, make sure that all of our classes are well-staffed, all of our classes are well designed and that we can really provide a high quality experience for all of our students, regardless of if they choose the in-person option or the virtual option.
Ms. Davis, I also would like to add that our social emotional supports, our mental health supports, our therapeutic supports, supports for students with special needs that are in distance learning will continue. We have, have plans to be able to help and support our kids that are in person as well as those that are going to be in our virtual and distance learning plan. So we, we absolutely will make sure that they are taken care of and taken care of at a high level. And we're going to provide those supports for them.
Without, without kind of bad, bad mouthing or bad, you know, other districts, what we're doing in Parkway is really a commitment, as Dr. Beckner said and Dr. Matheson, to, to both programs. And, and I think what parents are seeing or hearing from maybe other districts is that the dual effort, sometime it is difficult to address because you've got a teacher who's addressing both in-person and virtual students. And sometime it is hard to give attention to both groups. So in Parkway, we're truly committed to both instructional models.
Yeah, and I should be clear, that's for teachers as well as students. Because I, friends who are teachers in other districts that are trying to manage, you know, some students zoomed into the classroom. It's just, it's, they, their reports are, that it's just really hard.
Yes. Now, again, we're big enough, the fortune thing is Parkway is big enough and you're a smaller district. That's why I don't want to make it sound like, you know, you know, I think we're doing it better, but we also have the advantage of being a bigger, a bigger district with more flexibility. As, as Dr. Boggs said, we, we know we have that ability to find the teachers that we, we need from certification and, and just playing the size of our district.
Any other board members have any additional questions?
I would just like to ask if, I realize that we're kind of covering things at a very, very general, broad basis tonight. But that moving forward, if parents have questions that they can If parents have questions that they can contact the principal and will there be ongoing town hall meetings by Zoom perhaps that will help to outline more in detail for each of the individual schools? What parents can expect in the in-person and the virtual model if they're still needing information on that.
Debbie, to be honest, we have not even talked with the high school principals about a town hall or virtual meeting. We'll certainly have that conversation depending on what the board decides. But they did have those prior, so I, I anticipate that they will. They all have ongoing communication with their communities via newsletters or emails or updates. But they all have it titled something unique based on their school. We will continue to update the FAQ. I would highly encourage our community to continue looking at our website. Read our return to learn plan, read the questions. There's actually a link for our community members' parents to submit questions. And so our communications team looks at those questions and they send them out to those who need to respond to them. And then they post answers, especially after they see a theme going on with the submission. So we will continue to keep our public informed. We also have a page just for employees with an FAQ. And so we continue to update that as well as we get questions and know that other people have the same question and want to see the answers.
Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you all very much for walking us through that. Now may I have a motion in a second to the Board of Education approves the superintendent's updated recommendation to bring high school students back in person during the second quarter and as soon as we can do so effectively and efficiently.
So moved. Second.
Nikki, would you please call roll?
Ms. Davis? Yeah? Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Mrs. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Dr. Ciotino?
Yes.
Mr. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mr. Todd?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero. Next, may I have a motion in a second to the Board of Education call for a special meeting on Tuesday, October thirteenth, twenty twenty at seven thirty AM. This meeting will be virtual and the details of the anticipated meeting will be posted within twenty-four hours of the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. As mentioned before, there's no closed session. So now we'll move for adjournment. May I have a motion in a second to adjourn the special meeting?
So moved.
All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you all for watching and.